Call and regular city commission meeting, Lord, please rise for the invitation. Thoughts of the religious life our country. Our most precious heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity we have here this evening. Lord, we ask to special blessing in this city commission that you give us knowledge and wisdom to make the decisions that are in your best interest. And Lord, we're so blessed here this evening to have four wonderful young ladies represented here tonight, Lord, we ask that you look after them and bless them as they go through life. Please look over all of our city staff and employees and guide them for all these things we ask you, our precious heavenly name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'd like to welcome all here this evening. First on the agenda is sixty is provable minutes from our meeting on January the eleventh. They have been distributed. Any additions, solutions, or corrections? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, opposed, like sign. This motion carried unanimously. Next, we have a presentation to West Orange High School Future Farmers of America's National Food Science Competition Champions. So we go down front and the young ladies would like to come up here, please.
And we're excited about this honor that we're bestowing on these young ladies tonight. And you're hot, well, some of you are wondering, well, what did they do? I'm gonna tell you. Four students from West Orange High School made history on November first, twenty twenty-three, by winning a national award at the Future Farmers of America, FFA National Convention and Expo, held in Indianapolis, Indiana, where over seventy thousand members, advisors, and supporters attended. These students won the FFA National Food Science Competition. This is a first national win for West Orange High School as well as Orange County Public Schools.
Alright.
As a team, the students had to create a food product, then with limited information on the day of the competition, had to formulate the nutrition label and allergy information, as well as have a profit margin. They were also required to create an ingredient statement and a marketing strategy that included packaging materials and design, and I think they did this all in one day. So, right?
One hour.
Alright. This evening, the mayor and the city commission would like to recognize these students for their achievement.
We, the mayor and the city commission, do hereby recognize these students for using their individual skill sets to develop an award-winning team and becoming an FFA national champion, making your families, your school, and the citizens of Winter Garden very proud. So congratulations, and we have some awards over here. Oops, she's over here, Kelly, Kelly Henderson.
Kelly.
Kaylee, I'm sorry, I said Kayla. Congratulations.
Yes, Sarah.
Sarah Lewis.
Do the handshake first.
Yeah. Horace Prodeo. We would also like to recognize West Orange High School for creating an FFA curriculum that prepares members for leadership and careers in the science, business, and technology of agriculture, excepting on behalf of the school's principal, Mr. Matthew Turner. Congratulations, Matthew Turner, thank you. If you would like to say anything, or anyone else would like to, feel free to.
Well, just really quick, I want to say how proud I am of our teachers, and a lot of this hard work is attributed to our teachers, so could I have our three teachers stand up and just say, just want to say thank you for your hard work with the kids and the public. Well, and amazing district support staff, which they're here as well, so if you guys don't mind standing up to take some recognition too. Yes. And the national championship's amazing, but what's more amazing to me about this national championship is these four students aren't just in the FFA. They do a variety of other things on campus, have a variety of other leadership roles. It's just one part of it, so it's amazing part of a balanced education they're getting. I'm so proud of them for their leadership, not only in FFA, but in NHS, and the Beta Club, and all the other organizations they're part of. So this is an exceptional group of young ladies, and I'm so proud of them, and thank you, congratulations.
Okay, second reading of public hearing, it was those orders, orders twenty-four dash oh eight.
Yes, sir, orders twenty-four dash oh eight, the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amendments, orders twenty-three dash twenty-five, the city of Winter Garden fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four budget to carry forward prior year appropriations, provide conservability, and effective date with revenues as follows. General fund, twenty-six million, seven hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars, community redevelopment agency fund, two million, five hundred fifty thousand, forty-seven dollars, law enforcement trust fund, four thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars, local option gas tax fund, one million, sixty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, general impact fee fund, two million, eight hundred fifty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, transportation impact fee fund, eight million, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars, utilities operating fund, ten million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred thirty-seven dollars, utility, utilities impact fee fund, five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred ninety-seven dollars, utilities renewal and replacement fund, two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, storm ward fund, two million, six hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars, solid waste fund, three hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars, trailer city fund, four thousand dollars for total revenues of fifty-six million, four hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for the expenditures itemized identical to the revenues in that same amount.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, this is the second reading for the carry-forward budget to carry for prior year appropriations that were not spent last fiscal year that we'd like to carry forward to this fiscal year. Exhibit one lists the projects that the step or recommend to be carried forward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, ma'am.
Any questions from the commission? If not, we need a motion to approve coordinates twenty-four zero eight. Yes, public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will have a public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. We will close the public hearing. I mean, do my motion. May I go back to your motion? Okay. Motion to approve orders twenty-four zero eight. Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Under regular business, resolution twenty-four dash oh four. Mayor. Requesting to move resolution twenty-four oh four to the first meeting in February. He doesn't have it. So you don't have to read the title? Or do not?
You just need a motion.
Okay.
You need a motion to approve.
Okay. Then we just need a motion. Motion to move resolution twenty-four zero four to the first meeting in February eighth, February eighth. Yes, we have a second.
Second at six thirty, ma'am.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation approve city of South Daytona Beach piggyback contract sewer rehabilitation services. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, this is a request to use an agreement that Atlantic Pipe Services has with the city of South Daytona Beach for a piggyback contract. Atlantic Pipe Services installs liners in sewer and water lines, or stormlines, and this method oftentimes prevents us from digging them up, can be done cheaper, faster, helps a lot. Staff have requested the board approve us using this piggyback agreement, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions from the commission?
Where do we plan on using it at first? What sections?
Valencia shores, sewer lines, and we have other sewer lines that will be some longer runs that we'll use though.
Thank you for that long reading, too. Any other questions? The emotion?
Move to approve the use of the piggyback agreement.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation approve hiring Hudson pump and equipment for waste park treatment plant. Yes, sir.
So request to hire Hudson pump and equipment to rebuild the pump, as well as the motor on one of the effluent pumps at the waste park treatment plant. These pumps are used to pump the reclaimed water or the clean water throughout the city for irrigation purposes. Staff have requested approval to hire Hudson pump for seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to rebuild it and reinstall. Happy to answer questions.
Hearing none, we need a motion.
Motion to approve hiring Hudson pump and equipment for the pump repair for seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, sir. Recommendation to approve agreement for our city manager to execute an agreement with Healthy West Orange for a sculpture. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Healthy West Orange is requesting to install a sculpture in a city park at the corner of East Plant Street and Northwest Crown Point Road. The sculpture will depict their mascot Leslie running alongside a dog figure. The sculpture will be approximately five feet tall and will be installed in an existing landscape bed. Approval of this agreement will allow Healthy West Orange to install the sculpture, and it also makes them responsible for the long-term care and maintenance of the sculpture. So with that, staff recommends approval of the sculpture agreement with Healthy West Orange. Happy to answer your questions.
Questions? Do we maintain landscaping around it? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Move to approve the sculpture for Healthy West Orange.
We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Recite one for four eleven North Hiller. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. As you may recall, this is an assisted living renovation and expansion project that was approved by commission in twenty twenty-two and is currently under construction. The applicant recently requested a series of changes to the building architecture that include removing seven norbers on the south and east sides of the building, redesigning the entry area to reduce the size of the porticoche, and reconfiguring the rehab gym storefront windows. The applicant also requested minor site plan changes, mostly affecting interior courtyards that will not be visible from the exterior of the building. The city held a community meeting to discuss these proposed changes on January tenth, and none of the attendees there expressed concerns about these changes specifically. Some wanted to discuss issues related to construction and general traffic concerns in the area. So because of this, staff recommends approval of the revised elevations and minor site plan amendments, with one additional condition of approval that was not included in the packet, which is that the O-two farm enclosure be stuccoed or clad with another finished material rather than just painted CMU. And with that, we happy answering questions.
Questions from the commission?
The mayor, the people closest to him, you think of the façades and...
Yeah, it's certainly a large step up from what is currently there. Issue's just been getting through the parking down there. That's been a constant issue. But no, I think it, you know, certainly a lot better than what was there. Questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Move to approve second.
We have, with staff recommendations, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Oh, you got one more to board, appointments code enforcement.
Yes, thank you. The chairman of the code enforcement board, Dave Buckles, has recently resigned, so we need to appoint another replacement member. The city code does not have specific district requirements, but rather requires experience or interest in the fields of zoning and building control. So with that, staff recommends appointing a member to serve on the code enforcement board.
Dave Buckles is in District One.
He was in District One.
I had wanted to appoint Nick Farrell, who lives on South Life Year.
Does anyone have anyone else? Okay, is that form a motion, please?
Yes, please.
I will second her motion, Kate. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Matters from citizens of Winter Garden.
My name is Joseph Richardson, I live at two twenty North Highland Avenue in Winter Garden. Recently, Mr. Buchanan came up here and pointed out to you all some missteps that Commissioner Mueller had during his campaign, presumably with the idea to run him down even further. Vox Populi reported on that, and in case you didn't see the article, I'd like to repeat what they said, which was that Alana Jones also had election violations during that I'd also like to remind the commission that Mayor Reese violated the Constitution by ejecting me from a commission meeting for not standing for the pledge a number of years He presumably got advice, was educated on the topic, and now, as you see at the bottom of meeting minutes or the meeting agenda, it's stated that anyone is allowed to sit or stand for the application and the pledge allegiance. And that was pretty much all that happened there. He remains on board, as you can see. Less publicly, Commissioner Bennett also violated my constitutional rights. When she was early on, during the time that she was, the early time of her tenure, she had a Facebook page, and she banned me from that Facebook page, it was her official account as a commissioner, and she also became informed on the issue and took me off of that ban. So I just wanted to remind you of those, and I also wanted to say that I, you know, I am not a Christian, but I was raised as a Christian, and this whole situation made me immediately think of one of the parables of Jesus, which is in Matthew eighteen, possibly called the parable of the unforgiving debtor. I won't read it, but I will summarize very quickly. King called a man before him who owed him an unpayable sum of money, demanded payment, the man pleaded, begged, and the king ultimately, instead of throwing him to jail, throwing him to jail, forgave him the debt. The man immediately went out, found a second man who owed him a small sum of money and demanded payment. The guy begged and pleaded, but the first man threw him in jail anyway to pay the debt. Of course, the king found out about this and threw the first man in jail as well. I hope that, I think that the workshop tomorrow should be a fair resolution of this matter. If there was anything that was done against the city charter, then being educated about that should resolve the issue, and if it doesn't, you can revisit it later. But given these facts, I hope that you will see to it that tomorrow is, as I say, the
Just want to clarify, Bob Buchanan, one four eight Brooker Drive. I want to clarify one thing. The information that I gave out about Ron, as far as having the fine, I think it was seven hundred and fifty dollar fine for ethics, or actually, I think it was his campaign stuff, which five thousand dollars still hasn't been accounted for. But on top of that, Ileana is not a sitting commissioner, Ron is, and that's why I thought the public should know it. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I am Ileana Ramos Jones, and I was in Plano speaking today, but since my name was mentioned, I just wanted to...
Name and address, please.
Five twenty-nine Lake Point, Winter Garden, three four seventy-seven. The reason I'm here is because, yes, I was investigating, is that Mr. Closeup? And I am a new person, I'm a rookie, yes, I am, and the person that actually sent me to the state to be investigated was Vern Mueller, who has been a political figure since nineteen ninety. So the fact that you're saying that you're a rookie, you're not. You have been a political figure for years and years and years, so mistakes on your behalf, I don't understand. This was my first time, I was learning, and I'm still learning, and I hope to be, you know, learning more. So thank you so much.
Matters from our city attorney?
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, I have one thing, in respect to the reporting requirements that the state has, as you all know, as commissioners and others that are public officials, have to provide, up until this past December thirty-first, just you report your financial situation on Form One, which is a requirement, and I believe all of you all have complied with that Form One. So the legislature passed a law, the governor signed the law, I believe, where they changed the requirement for cities throughout the state of Florida to increase the reporting requirements, financial reporting requirements, to a much more detailed degree, it's called Form Six. That laws, it's in effect, and all of the city elected boards throughout the state are now, that serve as of January one forward, have to comply with that reporting requirement, which is due by July one of this year. So up until now, none of you, nor any other commissioner, council member throughout the state for cities, have had to do a Form Six. Judges have to do it, county commissioners, there are others, but city commissioners, city councilors have not had to do that until now. There's a law firm, it's the Weiss-Sarota Law Firm, that sent out a resolution to a lot of city attorneys saying, and to the cities, and some city managers as well, saying that they, if they got ten cities to join as their clients, to sign them up, at ten thousand dollars for a flat fee for the trial portion of the challenge, the firm would represent each one of those cities and its commissioners in that lawsuit. In the lawsuit is a challenge to that law, to the law that requires city commissioners, city council members to report Form Six for your service during it, for January one, twenty twenty-four, for forward. They have a number of bases, I've discussed this with the key lawyer with Weiss-Sarota that has proposed doing this. They have now at least ten, I think now eleven cities that have signed up to join the litigation, and so the law firm is committed to file that lawsuit. So they are moving forward with a challenge to the law that requires Form Six reporting. They're using some of the bases, the right to privacy in Florida, they're using some other bases, I've discussed with the lawyer, and there's no guarantee the lawsuit will be successful. But the financial risk to cities that do join is most likely the ten thousand dollars that you would pay as a flat fee. It does not cover any appellate fees if there was an appeal from, by either side. In my discussions with the lawyers representing, the point lawyers representing the cities, he did confirm that in that he, they would consider representing individual members of commissions and city councils if an individual city commissioner, city council member wanted to do that. Presumably, the cities that choose to adopt a resolution to join that lawsuit would use their taxpayer dollars to fund that ten thousand dollars. But I don't think that the law firm requires, and I don't see any legal requirement, that if any individual commissioner wanted to join that lawsuit, that they could, they would be prevented from doing so at their own expense if they so chose. The one, one of the things as well, the question I raised to them, well, thank you for those ten or fifteen or twenty, or how many other cities are paying that fee to do the challenge, and if they're successful in the challenge and it holds, so the law's overturned, it will benefit or pertain to, whether it's a benefit or a detriment, it will pertain to all cities throughout the state of Florida. So the cities that do not join the lawsuit, if the lawsuit is successful, then every commissioner and every county, city in the state would benefit, or be bound by that law, which would invalidate the law. So I said, well, there's not a big incentive for any other cities, you've already got your ten cities, why should any of the cities that I represent pay the ten thousand dollars to do that? And he said, well, one benefit is that if, if a commissioner, if a city commissioner and/or commissioners that would like to be in part of that lawsuit, join, then they do intend to file for a temporary injunction of applicable to that law, because a lawsuit's not going to be completed by July one. And your reporting requirement is, has to be met by July one of this year and each year after that. So if you comply with the Form Six requirements in its minute detail and broad reach, then your financial disclosure is in the public, in that great detail. Some people think that's okay, most people that I've talked to, I think that's, it's an overreach, it's, however, that's a, you know, everybody's got a different opinion on that. But if, if you as a commissioner or the commission do choose to participate in that lawsuit, you could ask that law firm, and they likely would agree to include you as one of the parties that would benefit from the temporary injunction, which would mean if the court were to grant that temporary injunction of you having to file that Form were to grant that temporary injunction of you having to file that Form Six, then you would not have to file that Form Six and you could stay without having to comply with that requirement until there was a final, most likely, a final ruling in that lawsuit. So if the law firm loses that lawsuit, then you're still going to have to comply with the Form Six requirements. However, if the law firm prevails in that lawsuit, they win and you were protected from having to disclose all of the detailed of your financial condition in that Form Six, then you would not be subject to ever having to disclose that broad detailed report of Form Six. So that's one of the benefits and he raised a good point. Actually, I was talking to some other city attorneys that did not know about it and some of the other cities have joined that lawsuit because of the injunction, or in large part, I think, because if they're successful, those commissioners that elect to be party to that injunction, be protected by that injunction, would be a small portion of the number of commissioners throughout the state and they didn't want to be left out of that opportunity. So anyway, that's a...
Yes, sir.
It was ten thousand cities, that means each commissioner would be two thousand dollars. Would say if one of us wanted to suspect the other didn't, so it would be two thousand dollars a commissioner?
That's not been decided. The lawyer believes there's a significant public purpose in it, so the cities can pay it either individually. Well, I didn't get into that analysis, but each individual commissioner would be able to pay their own thing if they...
We don't have that.
So it would be about fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, and what would be the, I know you can't guarantee it, but what would be the term factor involved in coming to a decision?
The commissioner or the judge?
The judge, yes. Would it be over within a year? Could it be two years?
We don't know. The lawsuit likely will be filed in the first couple of weeks of February and I expect that that law firm would proceed with a motion for a temporary injunction as part of that filing and very shortly after that. So you'll have, likely have a ruling on the injunction presumably before you would have to comply. So you would know when you have to comply or not. And one of the standards in that temporary injunction is what's the likelihood, is there a substantial likelihood of success with a lawsuit? So, and there's a number of elements in achieving a temporary injunction. So I don't know the answer. It depends on the court's docket, it depends on how much of an issue. I don't think it's a complicated lawsuit based on my conversation with the lawyers. It's primarily some legal issues, the risk to the cities and those individuals participating. If he were to lose, there's no basis for recovering, attorney's fees against you as a plaintiff if they were to lose. There could be some risk of costs such as deposition fees and things like that, but they do not expect to take much in the way of depositions and any cost would be a de minimis amount. So if you'd like to talk about it outside of the meeting, on one-on-one, they'd be happy to talk to you and put you in touch with the lawyer so you can have direct communications with him. If the commission as a whole would like to consider that and the city participating in that, you're welcome to do so. Even if after they file the lawsuit, the commission can still come back during the initial stages of that lawsuit and participate if you so choose.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Same manager.
I'll just distribute the resolution and her reference to each one of you so you can read that between now and the next few days so you can have this discussion. Other than that, I have another question. Commissioner Short?
I don't have anything, ma'am.
Okay. Commissioner Mash.
Yes, just something quick. I was having a conversation with Marilyn Hattaway at Habitat for Humanity and she just wanted me to pass on a few things to let her know, let us know that the money we've been helping them with and some of the things we've been doing and the money's going to good use. And this is specifically pertaining to the revitalization program and as you know, we're trying to improve some of the code enforcement issues that we have in certain parts of town, specifically in East Winter Garden. We've put aside some money so folks that need some help revitalizing their houses or meeting code requirements, we had some money available. So this goes back a little bit and so what I want to say is this is not pertaining to all the houses that they've built there, this is just a revitalization program. So seventeen homes revitalized from twenty-one to twenty-three, a forty thousand dollar grant, twenty thousand received from the city, three five twenty-three, to do twenty homes in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So that money will be going to good use. Thirteen houses revitalized since three twenty-three, seven houses scheduled to be completed by three six twenty twenty-four and twenty more houses to be completed by three six twenty-four to, through the year, through twenty twenty-five. So I'm getting...
I know that they're also looking at building some new houses over there as well. I think they're in the process of developing some site plans and so we'll certainly be bringing that back to you at one of the conferences.
So Marilyn just wanted me to thank the commission for the support and the city, of course, and the money's going to good use. That's all I have there. Thank you.
Commissioner Mueller?
Just briefly, I have comments. Ms. Jones spoke, I'll answer her question earlier. Ms. Jones, I'm pretty sure that nineteen ninety, I was in the U.S. Navy until August ninth and then I was in college starting August eighteenth. So just for verification, first time I served in public office in the state of Florida was the same time that you and I ran together. It was the first time I was exposed to that and neither of us, ma'am, said rookie, that was someone else in the interview that talked about both our mistakes being a rookie. I don't think either one of us intentionally did anything wrong. We just, we learned from that and we moved on. So, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Bennett?
One thing we lost, a dear lady in France, a week and a half ago, Mrs. Maddie Booker, ninety-three years old and the child of May was at the funeral and I'm gonna tell you what, it'd be ninety-three and she packed it and it was just a beautiful funeral that our area's gonna miss her. She was a loving lady and just did a lot for this area. She will be missed, but we know she's in a good place right now. And with that, we will adjourn.